The town alongs for planning board meeting. Thank you all for coming. First, on the agenda tonight, we have proposed stormwater regulations relative to new construction. There was an error on the agenda that said based water, but they actually are stormwater. Mr. Rolo is going to present.
That one for the chair. So, these are products of a stormwater group that met last summer, I believe it was. Mr. Crutch was involved, the former chair of the planning board, Mr. Madlin, myself, select board chair, Hubert, Michael Point, who's a local engineer. What does anyone else? And representatives from the Strapper Regional Planning Commission. Basically, these are a response to our MS four permitting that we are required to maintain for the federal government because of our proximity to the San Paul River. And it spells out for new construction or any project that can go to the planning board, either under site plan review or subdivision regulation. So, these are, for the most part, more major projects. These aren't single-family homes. These are multi-family developments. And it spells out how stormwater is going to be discharged. It utilizes the specifications and performance are the manufacturer specifications and performance specifications in the Hanford Stormwater Management Manual, Volume Two, which is published in 2008, or the most current recent revision, which calls for certain techniques such as the development, oh, just a moment, recessed educated landscaping, rain gardens, different types of ditching so that stormwater percolates back to the ground if it jet down into the street and off to the river. That's what the EPA and the E S are trying to avoid. So, with that, I'll be happy to take any questions either from the board or in the public.
Does it differentiate between small projects and large ones? Is there an actual measure in the?
John, maybe if you remember, John, you were part of the.
Ladies, it's been so long, I don't recall this one.
This meeting was supposed to have been held.
Yes. At least a year ago.
At least a year ago, and it gets hunted every single month because of scheduling difficulties. So, I apologize. Let me just try to find that one.
Sure. Kevin?
So, as I understand, like, this is some sort of, refresh my memory. About town, because of the MS four regulations, because of our proximity to the San Paul River, and typical of other New Hampshire towns, also apply to such permitting of stormwater management.
We're all required to do this.
And this isn't typical in line, if not identical, to other?
No, we fine tuned it to fit the wrong. But, yeah, I mean, the general gist is the same. I mean, it's to divert water away from rivers and lakes.
So, if you read the applicability of the very first page, well, I think it's the third page. It says that these stormwater management standards apply to projects requiring planning board approval, site plan approval, and projects requiring planning board approval, planning board review under subdivision regulations, which create new roads or shared driveways. So, you know, just a front of subdivision wouldn't make, these wouldn't apply to those. Site plans are any of the road.
Thank you. So, the actual number of properties is about, the established number one.
These are things we're already doing.
Well, so.
Some of them are. So, if you, I happen to have this, site plan review regulations out. And then site plan review, one of the questions I had for Mike and me, sadly, the woman who worked for Strapper that did these is no longer there. But we had asked her at one time to see, to incorporate, these were written so they could be incorporated incorporated into our regulations. If you look at our site plan review regulations on page twenty-two, it's section ten of the storm drains, which literally is a paragraph. In the subdivision regulations, it's on page, I think, eight of the appendix, inch eight. And section eighty-three, which is storm drain system, and there's about two, three pages. So, really, what I think is that, I think that this will be adopted as a new section ten in the site plan review regulations. And either in whole or in part, a replacement of section eighty-three of the subdivision regulations. But I think that, what I would recommend, Mike, is having civil consultants make sure, with regard to the subdivision regulations, make sure that, we don't, I don't want to just replace it in whole, if there's something in here that they think should stay.
I thought it was just an addendum, so it wasn't to replace. It was just an addendum at the end of section eighty-one.
However, you know, I think we have a, how it's inserted is a question that we're probably for the town over here. Okay. But I think, I think. I think you can adopt it if, you know, there's no comment from the public that, or you decided it works. And then in terms of how it's integrated into the site plan review regulations and subdivision regulations, I think we can bring that back once we get input from the town over here. And we talked about that at one time, so I guess it never happened.
The, well, we referred it to Strapper Regional, and I can't even think of her name.
Left.
I can't think of her name. And then Pat Huntet, month after month, and it fell off the radar, so until recently. Here we are again. Basically, it's to protect the town from large, you know, large, large projects so that runoff water doesn't run into the roads, which would mean that they're fine.
But I think, Kevin, I mean, I think it's the right thing to adopt. It's not protecting the town, per se, it's handling the fact that when you change in the landscape from natural to adding impervious surfaces of roads as such, so you want it managed properly and percolate back into the earth. But I think any time you're suggesting, you know, changing any perviage in existing as opposed to doing an addendum, I think that's a, that's a question I need to view by legal as well. Because you're looking at adopting policy, and if you're just swapping this newly written plan without that going on legal, I don't, I advise against that. But an addendum like, as Mike had suggested.
I think the problem with doing it as an addendum is that you're going to find inconsistencies with the two, which is why we had, we had talked about having the town engineer go through this and say, okay, in this case, we can replace all of A three D with this. In this case, it makes, it probably makes sense. But I'm not an engineer, and I don't, I don't want to make that, you know, I don't want to make that recommendation to you. So, I mean, it's gone on for a year, maybe, I don't know if there's any urgency in doing this now, but, you know, maybe what it would make the most sense would be to have Jay Stevens look at this in comparison to this, what we have now, the site plan and the subdivision regs, and come back to us with a regulation as to how we do it, and then have a public hearing to amend both the subdivision and site plan of the regs by inserting this either whole or part, you know.
And Jay was going to do that for us.
I don't, again, I don't think it ever happens. I'm certainly not suggesting second that engineering reg, as well as legal, but I agree with you there.
Okay.
But given the nature that it's, when this development's happening, I mean, I don't think it's a today thing, but it's, you know, you definitely need to keep an eye on it. Last thing we want to do is just muddy the water and try to clean up for it.
Well, and I think this is, I think this is good stuff. I mean, if I knew the woman's name, she lives, she worked hard on it. This is, this is, a lot of this is just model language from other towns. But as Mike said, we spent six, seven months, I don't know, it was quite a while, sort of making sure this was handled to the wrong measure, so it's not just, you just didn't pull it off the shelf. We went from paragraph to paragraph and added and deleted. So, it's, I think what you end up with is pretty good, but how we integrate it into our regs is probably, you know, for bestial by the entire, entire engineer.
Okay.
But we're certainly having a public hearing tonight. And ask the public what they think about incorporating changes. And then, you know, a subsequent meeting, discuss how to incorporate, and whether or not to adopt.
Anyone else on the board have question or comment? At this point, I will open it up for public comment. And before we do that, if people sitting in the audience can direct their questions to the chair, and try to eliminate any kind of crosstalk, speaking one at a time, it'd be appreciated. I don't hear any questions.
I think people aren't really here for this.
For this thrilling stormwater discussion? All right. Then we can close the public hearing. I don't think there's call for vote at this moment. I think we have action to do. Before that, right? Okay.
We have some time before the.
Yes, we do. Next question, all right? Yeah, why don't we tackle the rest of, and take some items from the agenda out of order? Did we get minutes from the last meeting? We didn't get minutes. But. So, no minutes. Correspondence, I didn't see any in there that was pertinent, any other business to come before the board.
So, the let board has a number of things we'd like the planning board to consider for the coming term. For site review, the need to revise driveway regulations, also road design regulations. We would suggest bringing in the police, fire, and road agent to discuss updating road design regulations. This is something that was discussed last year. The meeting never happened. And I think John actually touched on this for our chair, but home business and home occupancy permitting for businesses, whether or not the planning board would keep a list of licensed businesses, or that should be done through the town clerk, having that discussion, and whether or not the home business and/or home occupancy sections need to be revised.
Okay.
There's been, there's at least one property in town, people have had concerns with, others have had concerns with pine crest pine, which is, we have to go to Dover to get to, or some are supposed to access.
So, from the top, are these items that?
We don't have to tackle tonight, but I'd like, we'd like them on your reading.
Okay. So, is there one topic that you think you can, we can tackle tonight? We only have fifteen minutes. No, okay. So, why don't we get them on the agenda for a minute?
Well, this is what I'm saying. So, I think typically in subsequent months, if we don't have other business, typically in December and January, or you start in November, is there anything about zoning particles for the town more for March, so?
We've been talking about the road standards for quite a while, quite a while, and because we don't get a lot of subdivision activity in Rollins, where it sort of rears its head maybe every, I don't know, a couple of years. And I think the last time the planning board, and I don't want to say butted heads, but maybe disagreed with the fire department was, maybe it was a Shinberg subdivision?
I think it was an access road with a Hammerhead versus A versus A.
There was a Gagden Hill subdivision.
Yeah, but the point is that, you know, if this was like in summer of the door, where we were doing subdivisions every month, we, you know, it'd be fresh in everybody's mind. But the issue, there's a couple of issues that have come up. One is, you know, roadway with, as a board, we talked about trying to eliminate the amount of impervious service on sites, and that's been, our desire to have narrower roads has been a little bit inconsistent with the wishes of the fire department. And then the other thing that we as a board, or you as a force, have talked about and tried to do is get away from paving giant cul-de-sacs. But again, it seems to be not, well, many towns seem to embrace them, and prefer them. The fire department here is not, not wanting to go down that road. So. Or go around that road. So, I think it's something, you know, worth meeting with them, and it may be even beyond meeting with, bringing in someone from, you know, and a buddy, a fire, fire service, or a fire chief, or someone from another department, from another town, and say, how do these work in your town? Because a lot of it is just, you know, on paper, they don't look great, and just see how they do it. Because again, you know, the whole idea, and it's sort of, it ties, it ties into the stormwater management, right? Is it, you know, the less paved and the less impervious surface we have, the easier it is to handle stormwater. So, you're right, the last gagden was the last issue. So, at any rate, that, you know, that's, that's sort of how it, whereas it's, how it comes up, and it only happens every couple of years, but I think it's worth, we have a slow month. You know, the problem is we need to be prepared to deal with it two, three weeks early. If we try to keep in here. Right. I don't think the police has ever really had an issue. It's always been fire.
And, well, the previous road agent, our incoming road agent, I don't know, you know, plowing issues with Hammerhead versus cul-de-sac versus.
But I still think if we're talking about changing regs, and we're talking, you know, forecasting our next six months or whatever till town meeting, I think that's a scheduling thing that we can discuss when we don't have.
Yep.
I know, I have discussions to discuss, I understand that. And it does sound like it's sort of passing the buck, but it does need to be addressed.
And regarding the home occupations, I don't know, we've had some discussions in the last couple of years about them. So, I think, you know, at the very least, you know, maybe we spend half an hour going through the regs and see, do they, are they doing what we want them to do? You know, maybe, maybe there is a need for a change. And again, that's something you could do, you know, as far as we don't have, you know, we can't get the fire chief in here with our new book, or the new roadie, we'll always discuss that as a board.
The next meeting is an election day, do we want to change?
Yeah, we're going to have to change that. Well.
We don't have an election this time.
We don't have any.
Only the cities.
Oh, okay. So, we're good? Anything else? We have twelve minutes to.
Is there some, some talk of us having trade at some point?
There's lots of talk about. Again, that's one of those things we're waiting for a slow month, and it hasn't happened in a little bit.
The other thing that, and I don't know when they're doing it, but the state does offer planning board training class, training opportunities, generally spring and fall. I don't know when they are this fall, but I would assume you're getting correspondence? No?
I haven't seen anything, no.
And they can be really good, so.
Day long, day long thing?
Something, yeah, I, spring is typically a day long and a Saturday, you know, maybe not day long, but, you know, nine to four, nine to three, and almost day long. And then, and then throughout the year, they might have, you know, in the fall, they typically have sessions, you know, either at night or in the weekend. So, it might be, I'll look on the website and see when they are in distributed, say, two miles, and see if any of the body on the board is interested in going, so. And then, you know, I had talked with a few years, a long time ago, about doing something that our town planning board attorney, not sure who that is right now, but, and we've been waiting for a slow, a slow month. I talked to, I did talk to John Rattigan, who's represented us before, and he said he'd be willing to do it at no charge, but I'm not sure, I don't want to get him in here if he's not, I don't know if Steve Roberts, I don't know who's representing us now, so we don't have a whole lot.
Steve represents the town, but the planning board hasn't decided, haven't had a need for.
We haven't had a need, so.
And we asked Steve if he had an issue with, he said no, he didn't have an issue.
Yeah.
I recall we reached out to Terry Rattigan, who did some research for my year. Last year, we had a report through the board, so. And had prior to. Is that something we should have employees in case we need it, or just?
He assumes, having spoken with him quite a while ago, and three, two, two months ago, or three months ago, whenever I was asked to do it, he assumed that he's still representing you, but he knows it's a sticky town. If he doesn't get a phone call every month, doesn't mean that he's, you know, he's been discharged, so I think he's, he's there for you if you need him. So, I, you know, I can't, I don't know what, I have no idea what that one looks like, you know. It is hard not to know, you know. I don't want to schedule this, you know, an operating training session and then have, find out we got four other items on the agenda and get bumped.
Right. So, I agree that.
I think maybe the day, you know, the day after the deadline, or in October, it's there for letting you know, you know, and maybe we schedule that, or we could do.
So far, there's nothing on the agenda. I mean, I know it's very.
No, but Carolyn and I are having a discussion about the deadlines for applications, because they're not being followed, and it's kind of creating time challenges.
Right, I know, we have to schedule.
So, but there doesn't seem to be a centralized place where applicants can go and have their checklist. So, that's something that she and I have talked about kind of together.
Yeah. So, also, the, the website, when you go to the planning board website, and there's a link that says applications, there's nothing there. There's literally.
I don't think the application is.
Brings you to a Google Drive with nothing there.
I don't think they look, they're not, they're not, no one has them electronic.
No, this, this isn't.
So, can someone put that in a word, that we can scan it?
Yeah, I'll talk to Carolyn about that. And I'll get to who posted. I don't know, would you have to get it through by the board before we posted it?
What's that?
To be amended the application.
The application is just the application. I mean, I don't, I don't, unless you, if there's something wrong with, you know, you see him, I don't pay great attention to that.
I mean, they could be updated. I lived at Dover a couple of months ago, see, maybe we could just copy what they have. Theirs is like much more.
Yeah. It's not, it's not, the application itself is not adopted by a public, so, yeah, if you see something wrong with that, there's no reason we can't fix it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, there's a couple of things on there that.
Well, it was typed, you know, plenty of times.
The Z B A.
It's still at the top, so it's linked to.
The zoning ordinance is made on the website, you know?
Well, like, are they?
I don't think it has. I tried to look into their day.
This was on a typewriter.
Sure.
It looks like we're going to need a bunch more chairs.
We want them.
If we can recess for a few moments.
Can I, so you have another copy of this storm, I'm sorry, wastewater storm?
We can have, we can have my. It's posted, it'll be posted on the.
Okay. So, I have it.
No, we got one second.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Proposed, proposed.
Um, yeah, I just find out. Um, at least my mom has friends that have it. They're like. So, we have one chair.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, I guess they're.
Yeah, I can see if we can get a quiet.
And then they can get it.
Like a turnpike, oh, right.
Thank God the camera man just standing in the way. Thank you. Thank you.
But originally, the green street, right?
Yeah. Actually, Steve Roberts was at my neighbor's house, he was a streetwear beer. It's a little sad, I was having a party of my own, so. Five minutes. Five minutes. You can come get set up if you want, but I don't know if the setup entails. We'll just wait a few more minutes until we actually have set in the review number and get started. Three.
I'll be happy to know hopefully by the, by the next meeting, we'll have a new conference.
It's on the table.
So, where, where is this document on the website?
It's not, that's what I'm saying. It's a code of.
This one, isn't it?
Oh, sorry.
It was.
Sorry, we're.
I know, one time.
Okay. So, that's the satellite grant document? Somewhere.
Is it there? Can you find it?
Yeah.
All right, why don't we reconvene here? The next step on the agenda is discussion of subdivision of one-ten Rollins Road. So, I just want to repeat for the people of Norton, the room before, that if you can eliminate any kind of cross that happens, and direct all questions to the chair, and also give your name and address when you speak, and you can start your presentation.
Before we start, sure, on this chair, I just want to say that because this matter could potentially come before the Z B A, and I'm on the Z B A, I'm going to abstain from any discussion of it. I'm going to abstain from any discussion of participation or voting in regard to this matter, thank you, thank you.
Could you clarify that, John?
Uh, I'm saying I'm not gonna be, I, I'm a member of the ZBA also, and because it seems to me that, um, potentially this could come before the ZBA in some shape or form. And maybe not, but I want to err on the side of caution, and I'm going to abstain from any participation, questioning, voting whatsoever, I'm just gonna sit in this chair.
Well, for the record, the applicant and I would not have an objection to you sitting on this as a planning board member. Whereas we feel the only instance where this case could end up before the zoning board adjustment is under appeal. Where there's nothing else requested in terms of variance now or planned in the future.
It's, it's out of an abundance of caution.
I'm sorry?
It's out of an abundance of caution.
An abundance of caution.
Yeah. And we have plenty of numbers to look at.
Do you have a plan?
Yes.
All right, then, for the record, I am Paul Connelly, and the civil engineer and land surveyor here in Bicam, Jason and Megan LeVoy, owners and applicants of the subdivision request. I think by now you've seen the plans for the subdivision, they have been in one shape or another in front of the board for about a year or better now. And simply what is sought by your approval is the division of their five acre tract at one ten Rollins Road into two separate parcels. That being a remaining parcel of roughly two acres plus on the corner of Rollins Road and Shady Lane. And then a proposed three acre lot on Shady Lane with over two hundred feet of frontage. Along with our request that we have asked for of this board, we've asked for two waivers. And one would be from the requirements to provide his mapping, it's high intensity soil survey mapping with this application. Whereas we do have a soil test performed on both lots as part of this. And the second request is for a waiver from section one, nine point one five of the subdivision regulations, which states, paraphr- uh, paraphrase, that subdivision is not allowed on a class six highway. So, with that, again, two proposed lots, along with the two proposed lots is a proposed granting of a ten foot wide strip of land owned by the Levoys adjacent to Shady Lane. That would ultimately become empty simple part of Shady Lane, thereby allowing Shady Lane to have a full fifty foot right of way width. And also proposed, along with the request, is the improvement of Shady Lane consistent with the recently adopted, um, uh, policy by the Board of Selectmen relative to classics highways and the issuance of building permits on same. Basically, what is proposed is a sixteen foot wide gravel improvement to the existing Shady Lane with two foot wide gravel shoulders on either side of that sixteen foot wide gravel improvement. So, basically, it ends up being about a twenty foot wide panel of a gravel road. And that alignment, the horizontal alignment and the vertical alignment of that improved gravel road would essentially take place along the existing alignment of the gravel path now or formerly trod on Shady Lane. Again, we have done test bits on both the proposed lots, the proposed lot and the remaining lot. Thereafter, we applied for and received subdivision approval from the State of New Hampshire Department of Water and Land Services. And that subdivision approval is noted on the submitted plan set. It's a pretty simple request to the board, so rather than drone on about everything further at the time, I'm gonna open it for, for your questions.
Yes. Members of the board, questions? I'll open it up for a public hearing after, after the void.
So, Paul, so the roadway, the two foot, um, gravel buffer on either side. On the Van Duber's side of, of Shady Lane, where would the, I'm looking on the map, but where would the two foot buffer begin?
It would basically begin at the edge of the existing clearing along the, the edge of the existing pathway. So, in other words, we, for the most part, hugged, um, the existing edge along the Alan's land to the furthest extent possible. And therefore proposed expansion of the width, whereas the existing width is roughly ten to twelve feet. Exposed, proposed the expansion of it towards the LeVoy parcel.
So, it shouldn't, in fact, shouldn't affect the Van Duber's either from both, sorry, Paul or Alan. It won't, it won't affect either of their properties, though?
No, it, it won't affect, it would not require any clearing along their, their side of the road, if you will, it would not affect their property.
Comments? Let me, can I just ask a question, is this, is this new application, or I would assume it is?
It's a new application.
So, just to remind everybody, in terms of process, the way this works is that the first thing typically that the board does is review the application for completeness. And make a determination if it's complete or not. And complete doesn't mean it's any good, it could all come submitted a horrible drainage analysis, but it's there.
Yeah.
So, you say, yep, it's there. Part of that analysis is whether or not zoning is complied with before you accept it. So, one of the things that I, I, we need to discuss is whether or not this complies with the zoning ordinance. And I don't know if you want to do that now, or you want to open it up to the public and bring it back?
Yeah, let's bring it back.
Okay.
Kevin?
In the ten foot portion along the Levoys' land, you're not proposing any addition or removal of any sort of natural vegetation that exists there and now?
No, we're not.
Any changes of any of the, the topography or landscape in any of the existing on either side, other than what is needed for, for road improvement?
That, that's correct, we're, we're not proposing any change to that, and in fact, we, as shown on the plan, we sought to put the driveway entrance into the proposed lot in an existing cut and trees, so it wouldn't have to even cut through the driveway.
Any other questions? Patrick? All right, let's open it up for, um, public questions, and again, please, one at a time. Wow.
I have one.
Okay. Could you just state your name?
On the subdivision.
Could you, could you just state your name and address, please?
We take a piece of property.
Alan, state your name.
What's that?
Your name.
Alan Van Duber's at eight four Rollins Road.
Thank you, no, it's all right.
My hearing's not the best, to show that everybody knows.
What, what is your address?
The subdivision on Jason's property on Rollins Road is approximately eighty feet, I believe. How do you subdivide a piece of property on the road that subject doesn't have the frontage?
I, I think that's something that we'll discuss.
Okay, then the next question is the road itself. I believe you talked about sixteen feet plus two each side for twenty feet. That doesn't bring it up to a class five status.
I agree, I agree.
The road will still stay at six, the class six road, will this end up going to the ZBA first?
These are, these are excellent questions, thank you for raising them, we, we don't know that yet.
And then for this road to come up for a class five status, it has to be a second person, right?
John, I'm gonna defer that to you.
No, I mean, you could have a class five road with one house on it.
Here, let me, let me rephrase the question, can a second person build on this road that's being proposed the way it is, sixteen plus four?
Well, it, it's a good question, and I don't have an answer, if it was a class five, yes, if it was a class six.
Probably not.
Then I'd go through the same process. Probably not.
Probably not.
Probably not.
So, in order for any of this to happen, this road has to be, an answer has to be brought up before everybody, butter and everybody, correct?
Um, I'm not sure.
Because there's a second person involved here, and a possible third involved that's coming, guaranteed. That one you can take to the bank.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, th- this is, this is the process we're here to discuss, um, so. We won't know what happens until it comes to a problem.
Before anything has been put in here, I can tell you there's a second one involved, it's gonna be involved.
I don't know what you mean by a second one, second a butter?
Pigment?
Second a butter?
Yes.
Okay.
To the road.
And they're here?
Yep.
Okay, let, let, let's have them, uh, ask a question.
There's your, there's your paperwork right there, that's, that's a letter of intent for subdivision off Shady Lane, to subdivide.
Oh, okay.
Twelve two.
Totally misunderstood the, the question.
As long as the town is opening this road, then it'll gain clear, and there's possibly a third one coming.
I get you now, so he's, he's saying he's interested in subdividing this thing.
Okay.
Okay.
That's a separate matter, I, I really appreciate you, you went to our attention.
Just telling you what's coming.
Yeah.
All right, you'll have this officially later on in the week.
Thank you very much. Are there any other in the back?
Yep. William Hammond, sixty four Rollins Road. I just had a couple of concerns of, um, opening the road and closing the road. So, if you can come in six hundred feet off a class five road, from the new guidelines that were written. If you come in six hundred feet, do you do bars and gates at that point? If an applicant comes in, has Mr. LeVoy wants to put a house out, when he's finished, you have a hammerhead there. I, I'm assuming it's a hammerhead, for the turnaround. At that point, can you close that road from the six hundred feet all the way to Dover, on this specific road?
Chairman, I, I think, Chairman may be confusing the planning board process and the guidelines that the select board has enacted versus the building permits, they're completely different processes. This board would need to grant a waiver to bill, have any frontage on a class six road, which the ZBA will have. The, the select board enacted policies in the event that there was a project like this, or on.
Fresh Creek.
Fresh Creek, there's been interest down there. And those guidelines are to, to guide the select board on how to issue building permits, it has no effect on, on the process that this board uses to make the determination. So, the guidelines you're, you're citing.
Okay.
Have no, um, they're, they're not, um.
Have no bearing.
They're not bearing on, on, on this part of the process, so they, this board couldn't answer any of those questions.
So, you have no idea what these guidelines are as a planning board?
They know what they are, but so.
Okay.
But they're, they're a different piece of the process, so.
Well, my, my concerns are, I don't care if Mr. LeVoy builds a hotel back there, goes in six hundred feet, builds his hotel, and shuts the road right where he ends.
The road is still shut.
I understand.
We're not moving the gates involved, we would not be doing that, neither the planning board nor the select board.
Okay.
There would need to be an agreement, a memorandum of, of understanding, if this was all approved by the planning board, we would then go to the select board, and the select board would then have to enter an agreement with, with, in this case, the Levoys. So, they would understand what services would or would not be provided to them.
Okay.
The road will not be maintained, it will not be plowed, they would be responsible for all of that, the road is still a class six road, the town is not going to maintain it, whether it's Shady Lane, Fresh Creek, or any other class six road. So, if that part really is, doesn't change, so there wouldn't be, if we were changing it to a class five status, then we would be talking about hammerheads, cul-de-sacs, any other number of improvements.
Well, even if you go up to a class six road, you still have to put some type of turnaround there, at six hundred feet. For emergency person, for emergency vehicles to come in and turn around.
The road would need to be sufficiently wide enough for emergency vehicle to get down. Again, that would be something we would be, just to get further in the process, you know.
Okay, I, I thought that, that would come up tonight, where if this was approved, could you take that in consideration, where you could stop the road at six hundred feet? And then close it to foot traffic only?
I can tell you that regardless of what the planning board does, the planning board could say yes to ten individuals, uh, individual houses on Shady Lane. The select board has said as a policy, we will not issue building permits unless it meets certain specifications. So, anything past six hundred feet, you're not gonna get a building permit from the current select board. Now, the next select board in March could say, yes, we'll give you one all the way up to Dover, I don't know.
Right, but, no, that's why when I read in, you know, came in, that all it means.
So, only one person, whoever is six hundred feet up, that would be whoever that is, they would only be allowed two houses, and after that, you would need to petition to have it be a class five road.
Okay.
One on either side of the road, so.
Yeah, thank you.
John, you were gonna say something, and I'll say.
I was just gonna simply say that, that, that any road issue is not in the purview of the planning board, with, with regard to class six roads, that's all the Board of Selectmen, they lay them out, they allow construction or building permits on them. This, this board has nothing to do with how a class six road is used, all, all we're doing is deciding, but to your point, is there, is there gonna be a cul-de-sac on there? That, that's something the planning board can certainly consider, but the layout of the road, that's a select board issue.
Right, and, yeah. My biggest concern is I have but Shady Lane, my house is the closest to Shady Lane, and the last thing I want to see is Oak Street behind my house. That's why I was asking if that's approved, could you shut that road down from that six hundred feet beyond, in the future? That was just my question, and I guess I have to go to the select board for that.
And I'm not trying to be rude, I don't want you, this, we can't handle any of that here, but I can tell you that, as far as the current board is concerned, we don't want to do that because I'm upset. I'm gonna share your concern, now, in March, with the new select board, you know, different folks are on it, if there are different folks, they may not feel the same, but.
Kevin?
I just want to focus on the LeVoy project, this discussion, and, and bring it back to scope here, and, um.
Yes, sir.
Move forward with the different application, speak to a complete.
Yep.
I like your perspective, I waste time and move forward on discussing this project right here, right now.
Public hearing's still open, right?
The public hearing is still open, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I just have a quick question.
Name, please.
Silent Leopold, four twenty six Washington Street.
Thank you.
Um, and this is more directed towards the board about the process, then, um, when in this process does, um, the project go before, like, emergency officials, the fire department and the police department and stuff to ensure adequate safety? There's been questions on the past about different roads not meeting the standards for the fire trucks and stuff.
I, I think when they would go to go building permit is, is when that would happen, so. Further, further down the process. Thank you, any other comment?
Yeah, I assume we're still on the, uh, the, uh.
On the.
Project.
We haven't started that one yet.
No, no, we haven't done it yet.
Oh, thank goodness. Sorry, that's what it looked like.
We're not over yet, so. Anyone else? All right, I'm gonna close, or, yeah, close the public hearing at this point.
It was suspended, so then we could reopen it in the future if you want.
Okay, continue the public hearing, okay. That sounds good, um, so, the things on our to-do list are to review the application.
Yeah, so, so typically, for those of you, you guys have all been around a long time, I would provide you a memo saying this is, you know, what's there. Um, I, I did not get these plans until I saw them, I got them emailed to me yesterday by you.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I had. So, um, I haven't done that. I've done it in the past, um, but I don't think that's really an issue. The biggest issue for me is, and I would turn your attention if you have the plan in front of you, if you look at the lower left-hand corner, the zoning requirement section. This is, it's been a hang-up that we've had for a long time. The, the frontage requirement is two hundred feet. And, and frontage is defined as, uh, frontage on a class five highway or better. That not only does lot sixteen two not have any frontage on a class five highway, but we're now taking away ten feet from a, from a, from a lot that doesn't have adequate frontage now. You're going from, I think ninety-three feet to eighty-three feet or, I don't know, the angle is unclear. But clearly there's not two hundred feet. So, from day one, I, I, I have asserted that this thing, this, this subdivision needs to get a variance, two variances. One is for, to make a non-conforming lot more non-conforming. And then to create a lot that doesn't have any frontage at all. So I don't think you can, I don't think the board has any authority or jurisdiction to review this plan, um, as proposed. I think if they got a variance, it's no problem. But I think those are the two variances that are needed.
So, I don't know.
If the planning board wants, if the board, if the board of the planning board to waive section nine point...
Uh, nine point one five.
They could do that. And you can't make a not, you can't make a non-conforming lot more non-conforming though.
Right, not by whom gonna...
Oh, okay.
So, so you could, you could allow the, for, for... They would have two hundred and eighty-two feet of what's left.
Along?
Along Shady Lane. So you put, this board potentially could waive that section so there would be a compliance there. They would need a, you're suggesting then that they would need a variance from the ZBA on the Rollins roadside? So that's only going to ninety-three point, oh, ninety-three point five three?
The proposed frontage is ninety-three point five three, whereas the existing is one oh seven point one one.
So it's a, it's a non-conforming, pre-existing.
If I could...
Or we could create a longer one zone.
Yes, please. Both the proposed lot and remaining lot, uh, number sixteen will have more than two hundred feet frontage on a street, on a highway, on a road. In this case, it's just not a class five or better, it's a class six road. And furthermore, I don't think it's the intent of the recently adopted, policy by the select board relative to the issuance of building permits on a class six highway to impose or inject an applicant into a catch twenty-two situation. Okay? It does suggest in there states and, and the policy that where possible, a, a giving of land sufficient enough to make for a full right-of-way width for the subject class six highway is highly suggested. And that's what we've done here. And we haven't done that to put ourselves in jeopardy.
Can I ask John a question? So John, if we, let's take out the class six ticket for a moment. Let's just assume that both of these projects, these properties are side-by-side on Rollins Road. And one has two hundred and ninety-two point two two. And one has ninety-three point five three.
Well...
You're suggesting we wouldn't, we wouldn't be doing that after?
No, no. If, if, if you're gonna consider Shady Lane a town road, then it eliminates the non-conforming of lot sixteen. Cause now you've given it four hundred and forty-four feet. Now it's got, now it's a corner lot, so that, that, that would have ample frontage. You've got frontage on Rollins Road, frontage on Shady Lane, so that goes away. And then you've got adequate frontage here. The, the issue is that it's not a class five highway or better. And...
No, no, I understand that. What I'm saying is if it were on a class five road and the same, situation were the same, two ninety-two, ninety-five, it's still gonna be doing it, you're suggesting. It would be creating even more non-conforming law.
The fact is, it suggests a careful rating of zoning ordinance.
But, but I'm, if this was, if this was, I, I think what you're saying is this, if this was a class five highway?
I'm saying, look that lot so it's next to, just saying...
So they're both on...
If they were both on a class, they were both on Rollins Road, I was just saying.
Yeah.
Two hundred and ninety-two feet on Rollins Road and ninety-five feet on, we were going from one hundred and seven to ninety-five. Would you still be saying we should not be creating a non, even more non-conforming lot?
Well, you don't have, or is it just the fact that it's on a class six? Well, you don't have the, this, this planning board does not, you, you cannot grant a variance. By taking ten feet away from the frontage on a class five highway, you're granting a variance. So, I don't know how you get over that hurdle.
Okay. That's what I'm trying to understand.
Okay. I, I don't know that it's a hurdle. If you read the definition of, of a street, of a road in a frontage in your zoning ordinance, you'll see that it does not speak to class five, class six or whatever. It just talks about a street or a highway.
Thank you. Where is that? Zone or subdivision? So where, where does that all end?
In my opinion, I, I, as I told you before, I don't think you have any authority to approve this. I don't, I think, I think there's two variances required. Again, sixteen two has no frontage, fifteen, lot sixteen has planned frontages being made more non-conforming by, by, by this subdivision, so... And I think it's not just for you, but I think it's for the applicant. If this board were to even proceed with this thing, and someone were to appeal it, what variance would you? You can't, you can't grant variance. And what you're doing by even considering it for me is granting two variances.
Okay.
I think that Paul, I, I agree with Paul what he's saying about access to building for, granting, granting a building permits on, on a class six road. If this was a, a landlocked parcel that was there, you know, for years, we wouldn't be, this would be a different issue. But we're creating issues by subdivision. And I have no way suggesting that they don't, shouldn't get a variance or, that's not my, you know...
Right. So the sections of the zoning ordinance, um, uh, under discussion are section two point five seven, which is the definition of street, and section four point four, which states that no building shall be erected except on a lot fronting on a street. We're backed up to two point five seven, which says, street means a public road, public highway, or public thoroughfare, which constitutes, or is designed to constitute the main access to more than one lot in which has been or shall be, shall be proposed to be legally dedicated and accepted for public use, which means all town construction specifications. So as such, you do have enough frontage on Shady Lane, on the remaining lot, on the other proposed lot. And certainly, there is a reduction in the frontage along Rollins Road. But as such, that doesn't put you into a variance situation because you've added the frontage on Shady Lane. Again, added, it's, it's been there all along.
Okay.
So... The statue's still, um, this is what we had on class five, by the way. In the section, the case, that, the class six road is not a road purely, uh, purely provided by, this is, this this is not a new thing. It's been well settled in the course. It was a long history. Class six roads are not, if this would be an easy situation, if this road was laid out as a class five highway and built that way, then we wouldn't be talking about this. But that's not the case. Or a, or a road built to class five standards, it could be accepted by the town. I mean, there's, there's just a lot of, you know, the other, there's issues in that, in that is that the right-of-way isn't, you know, that would have to be, you'd have to be a party to that. Or a select.
So where does this end us with this application?
Well, the, to my way of thinking, if the, the application doesn't meet the zoning ordinance, you can't accept it. It's automatic, you have to deny it. If you don't, if you don't, um, if you questioned my opinion and it wouldn't hurt my feeling, you could continue the application and seek, uh, you know, an opinion from your attorney. I think you've got it, you've gotten it before. But I'm not positive.
What is the opinion from the attorney? I know that it's, it's...
I've seen it months and months ago, either a year, a year ago. It's, it's been a long time, but...
And it's that long?
I haven't seen it in a long time.
Are you making reference to the June twenty-one, two thousand and sixteen opinion from Attorney John Raddigan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The plan in front of you differs from the plan that went in front of Attorney Raddigan. The plan that went in front of Attorney Raddigan was Division Zero and it had a access right-of-way easement proposed through the front lot to get to the front, to get to the back lot. This is not the same plan.
Okay.
So, perhaps it might be instructed to the board to solicit an opinion on the submitted plan with regard to road frontage and any other zoning issues that might have questions regarding.
I don't believe a choice, but it's enough.
Certainly not much to open, if this board was approved, I don't want to open the appliance up as a legal challenge at the, at the consulting firm that moves. I'm just scared that I'm gonna do that. So I think I'm trying, it was nine twenty, June twenty-one?
Do you have the letter right there?
I have a copy of it.
I know we have a physical copy.
But again, it's June twenty-one, Attorney Raddigan. Uh, it's two thousand and sixteen, by the way.
So we are running over into our next allotted, um, applicant.
June twenty-seven, sorry.
Are you still looking?
No, no response.
Okay. So at this point, do we need a, a vote to continue the application? For legal review?
It's a little odd that you haven't accepted it. But I would say, uh, yeah, to me, the applicant gave no evidence to seek and ask, you know, have, have Attorney Raddigan review this plan. At least we'll have an answer, you know, one way or the other.
Yeah. I, I don't want to create more legal issues for the applicant, um, by approving the plan. I, I think it makes sense to, to have our lawyer, the town's lawyer, review it.
But it also makes sense at this juncture to have the plans reviewed, um, perhaps by the board's agent for completeness, so that issue can be addressed.
Thank you. I...
And there are no other issues at least, uh...
I don't see, I mean, I've done it before, but I don't see any issues. I mean, the, the, as you said in your opening remarks, this is a pretty simple subject. It's, 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 it's unfortunately, um, you know, this, the class six road is the, is the hiccup. So I, I'm happy to do that, but I, I guess I would, in, in order to sort of reduce, you know, the cost of the review, I would rather just wait. Attorney Raddigan can turn around and review quickly. I would wait until, cause if he says you gotta get a variance, then I'd rather hold off.
Say again?
If, if it's, if it's the opinion of Attorney Raddigan that a variance is required, I'd rather hold off my review until you get that, just to save your client money. But I'll do whatever you, I'll do whatever you want.
We have already had that. That's already, might you have all of that already?
It was on Plan Revision Zero, not on...
No, it was on the other one and it had to go back to the select board for us to do this. We did this revision because of Attorney Raddigan's comments. And the select board has the authority to approve the variances. It's in all of his force comments. We've already done that.
Right, in the interest of time, I'm gonna, um, table this topic and we'll pick it back up at the end of the meeting, um, but, or other at the end.
If it's, the letter says something contrary to
Okay.
what we've done, then we're just gonna review it legally. Recess up, uh, in the year, until November.
Okay, this is a, this is a, a copy of both Chairman Macklin's email correspondence to Attorney Raddigan. And then Attorney Raddigan's email report back to Chairman Macklin. Is it possible to copy that or?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a copy right, if you mind, right?
So, Raddigan thinks it's okay. We vote to accept it.
If you want. I, I, you know, I, you know, I, I push too fast. I don't, you know, I don't know, I mean, I, the first time I'm looking is I don't know if that letter was written based on these plans. If it was, then you wanna proceed, then that's sure, sure.
Chairman, I would just interject that I believe it is imperative that Attorney Raddigan, if he's gonna be solicited for another opinion, receive a copy of this most recent plan submitted to, to this board. Cause every, every element and issue relative to land matters changes from plan to plan. And it really needs to be, the opinion has to be specific to what is in front of the board.
Oh, absolutely.
I think Caroline Lamro and, and perhaps Sarah have, and perhaps the whole board at this point has, um, PDF files of the plans and the supporting documentation also, so it should all be readily transmittable to Attorney Raddigan. Or Attorney Raddigan, who, who, after the board chooses to, to engage. Some of her swears, emails, who's yours?
Yeah, so, in a nutshell, I don't know if you all read it, but it says that a variance is required.
Say that again?
It says, I'll get to the second one. It says that the definition of street ordinance, Section 2.5.7, requires that a street be designed to be the main access, which has been designed and built to the Towns construction standard ordinance, Section 4.4, states that no building shall be erected except on a street, on a lot fronting a street. This means that the property owner would need a variance if a lot doesn't have compliant frontage on access from a pre-public road, which his proposed back lot does not have. As this subdivision is proposed with frontage on Shady Lane and access on Rollins Road, the applicant will need a variance, never mind a waiver, from the Section 9.1.5 of the Planning Board subdivision regulations. He then goes on, I'm trying to find the right page. Sorry, I did seven copies for all of us here. Our machine doesn't have it. Very frustrating. Okay. One of the questions that was asked, can the town legally approve a subdivision with frontage of a lot on a Class Six road? Answer, I add your question in where access is fronted on a roadway, other than that, where the lot takes its frontage. If we examine together the zoning ordinance, Section 4.4, and the definition of street and ordinance, Section 2.5, is the my reading?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. The zoning ordinance requires that lots have access to frontage on a street that is a public road built to town standards and designed to be the main access to the lot. A Class Six road can be a public street. However, in this circumstance, the Class Six road, Shady Lane, is not proposed to be how the lot takes its access, which was your other plan.
Correct.
Lot access is proposed to be from Rollins Road. And the zoning ordinance requires that the street shall provide both frontage and access. Do not believe the planning board can approve this lot without the applicant first obtaining a variance, but that was for the other one. I haven't read them all. The first part seems to tell me that, I mean, I'm trying to get everything, all the pages everywhere, so. You caught the right part. It's multiple pages. I'm going to do it to John, so he can make that real quick. Sorry, I might as well, I think we probably should have a yard. So on one, to me, it seemed that on one part, it's moot, because on the second part, I forget, it's not the same application, but the first part seems to be still relevant, but I don't want to, like I said, this is going to be forward, I don't want to set applicants up for failure because the planning board screwed something up.
I think the letters, I mean, I think that, we probably shouldn't talk about this, I appreciate it, it does, it is based on a different plan. But I think if you read the second, sorry, Page Three of the email, it's pretty clear if you read. Answer the question number one, can the town legally approve a subdivision with frontage on a Class Six road? The answer is no. So, you know, I think we probably should get a opinion on this plan out of the old plan, but I think the answer to question number one is going to, is going to change. And the answer to question two is a little bit changed now because they're dedicating land from the existing frontage to the Shady Lane access, so that's going to have, that's going to change that answer. If you look at Page Three of the email, or Page Three on the bottom, the answer to question one is exactly what we're talking about.
Right, that's what, that's what I wrote.
Question two is a little bit moved now because they've changed the way it's laid out, and three is a little bit issued. So I really think if you focus on the answer to question one, the answer is in this, you know, in your attorney's, in your attorney's opinion, yes, as well.
Question one is, question one is, can the town legally approve a subdivision with frontage to the Class Six road? The answer is, we do not believe the planning board can approve this lot without the applicant first obtaining a variance and requirements of zoning ordinance.
So in this case, we are providing frontage and access.
On a Class Six road.
Again, the parameters, the variables have all changed.
All right, well, I'm going to leave it up to the board to step forward their motion and to take the next action here. I think the most valuable thing we could have is an opinion on this very plan submitted. I think that's the critical key to this information. You're right, this is, this is taking other plans, and I'd like to read an opinion on this. I agree with that. And again, do we need a motion and a vote to make that happen?
I wouldn't make a motion, well, let's talk about something else. I mean, are we paying, who's paying legal fees, are we? Have the fee been paid to the applicant?
Yes, I have.
So I don't know, is it our response? I, as a question, I don't want to answer, I mean, do you want to pay, or do you want to pay?
The line for legal fees with point...
Yeah. So then I would just, I guess if you're going to make a motion, I would do two things. You've got to continue this application to the November meeting. Continue the public hearing. And then, you know, you're directing, you want Attorney Rattigan to review the most current plan in whatever state it is. I've got a copy, a large scale copy, that's the PDF print.
Yeah.
Well, so I'll, I can, I can mail the large size, or hand a little of the large plan, if that's... And then I'll, I'll leave that, I'll talk to you about that.
Okay.
I've got it all.
Sure?
Yeah.
Want one for your final question?
Sure.
Miles, may I speak more much, please?
Can you just take your name?
Yes, Megan LaVoy, went to Rollins Road. So can you explain to me the, I don't care, fine, because I missed your legal review for, I don't know, 15th time in two years at this point, but can we talk a little bit about what the next steps are and what the process would be? Because I'm going to be polite in saying that it changes with every meeting that happens between the planning board and the Select Board. We are told something different every time we go to a meeting. And I've got to tell you, you guys were submitted all of this stuff on June 12th for John to say, and the whole thing of not being on the agenda for tonight originally was because do we have the digital thing for John? Nobody asked for that until the deadline of the meeting to say that you needed that. There's zero proactiveness out of this board, and I need to understand what's the process going to be, because all we do is table it month to month and switch it from board to board.
Okay. I'm not trying to make your life more difficult at all. Let me just say that to start with. I'm trying to do what's right for the town. This is a volunteer position, I'm not sure if you're aware of that.
I am.
So the next step is, we're going to get it reviewed. So if we approve tonight, and you, you go off and get a building permit and get sued, I don't want that to happen.
I understand that. I'm asking you, as the chairman of the board, what is the next step in the process?
Sure. Let me respond, because Miles is a little new at this. In terms of, I'll take it on two roads. The first road is that our attorney says that he concurs with your, with Paul Conley's position that there's no variance required. If the planning board agrees with that opinion, and I would assume they would, I have no reason to believe they wouldn't agree with their own attorney, then I think that we would just review this as it were any other subdivision and potentially be in a position in November to, you know, act on the application. If the attorney comes back and says, I believe that variance is required because the plan is creating a lot with inadequate frontage on a Class Five highway, then you would have to go to the zoning board and get a variance, and potentially two variances for the two lots that you're, you know, making the front lot smaller in terms of frontage and then put the back lot. If you got that variance, which you probably, and I don't know what the schedule is, I'm assuming you would not get that before the November meeting. The planning board would have to continue the November meeting till, say, December, until that, until you either got the variance or you were denied. You know, and if you got the variance, ultimately, the planning board could act on your application. If you didn't get it, then we couldn't, there's nothing we can do. Is that, I mean, is that a fair?
That's...
I think that's about, that's how the process...
So what is the process of when you guys get the response back from the attorney on, are you going to surprise us in the November meeting, or will we know prior? Will we get an email?
I'd like to think that we would share, I mean, I don't know. I'm not an attorney, so I can't answer that. I'm assuming, I'm afraid to answer it.
I think we would share those responses with...
Upon receipt? I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm assuming we would share it. I don't know why we would surprise you or hold it back, or, you know, I would think that as soon as we have a written response, we would forward it to you. Unless for some reason, the attorney said that, you know, he wants you to review it first, but I don't, I don't know how, I don't even know what that, that I've said, if there was an attorney-client prepared for this statement or not, so I don't. So unless, unless there was a reason he didn't want us to share it, I would assume we'd share it right away.
Okay, and my last question, and Mike, this might be for you. So it started out with Attorney Rattigan, and with the Select Board, we just went to Attorney Roberts. So where is this going?
Well, so, it's frustrating, I'm sorry.
Nope.
But there are two different parts of the process. So Roberts was handling the building permit section. So John Rattigan's a land use attorney, so he would handle all the planning issues, so it's... Roberts wouldn't be, wouldn't be part of it.
Just one other difference between the two.
Most towns don't want to have the same attorney representing the board selecting the planning board in cases of appeal or something.
Conflict, okay.
Generally, they, and that's why we split.
Thank you, Mike.
So let's just say, best case scenario, Attorney Rattigan gets the response back and by end of next, Sarah, what's the, what's the, you do the scheduling for the ZBA, what's the turnaround with...
ZBA is the same thing, it's 20 days.
It's 20?
Yeah.
So...
You have to give us 20 days in order to submit application and notice.
So when is that, though? Do you meet as needed, or?
Yes, as needed.
At hot basis, so by statute, the ZBA is impelled to act within 30 days of the submission of an application.
So, tonight's Tuesday, if we get an answer back Friday...
Assuming that everybody, the other thing is that, assuming that everybody can attend a meeting, because it's not a regular schedule.
I'm just asking, should I push them, push him to make a...
I'm going to be honest with you, you should. I should go to December.
No, no, I was asking, should I push, should I push Attorney Rattigan to make it, to have a written opinion by Friday?
In order to make a November meeting?
In order to expedite, well, I'm just thinking, if he says a variance is required, I'd like to see if we could get the lawyers into the ZBA before the November planning meeting, so we don't have to continue again. That's what I'm asking. Is there any, if, I mean, how urgent can, I have only been scheduled...
I'm not seeing things move very urgently, the ZBA, to be quite honest.
Okay. Within the 30 days, though?
We've never had that issue. So I'm not, in my experience with the ZBA, so I'm not sure.
That's how I understand it.
Yeah.
Last time we appeared before the ZBA, it took about 65 days before we were in a meeting, but it was primarily due to the fact that all members couldn't attend, so it was somewhat of a moot...
Have they responded to that, Paul? Wasn't that they waited 65 days to try to respond to you?
No, no, no. We were in constant contact, but it was a matter of the convenience of the board to convene. Now, I mean, you know, we could have taken a hard line on that and challenged it through the selectmen, but then, you know, that brings forth a whole different... lengthy process, and we decided, you know, we'll just wait for the board to get to a date that they can meet, and we came before the board, and we met with them.
Yeah. Best seen day.
So you think that, if you do the scheduling, you, the chair, you think best case scenario, we're going to assume it's December?
I do.
So regardless of... Well, I think it's fair to the applicant, because the applicant's a long time to continue to November, and if we can't, you know, let's not presume that...
Yeah, exactly. Like I said, in my experience, we've never had the, like, stick with something tight, so I don't...
Well, we don't know what the, we don't know what the attorney's opinion is going to be. Maybe we're making a mountain of a mole. So I guess I would continue to November, well, I'll do the very best I can to push him to get a written opinion as soon as possible, and let's see what, let's see what he says.
I think when he, when, 2006 monastery, when we asked him the questions, turnaround
Supposed to be 40 days.
Took him 40 days for his response?
Yeah. June 21 was when Chairman Macklin sent out his email request, and the response came back July 27.
Well, this was...
Certainly tried to speed things along.
This was dated two weeks later, so I don't...
Say again?
This, this one is dated two weeks later, though. This was July 5, and then this was forwarded from Pat on June 30. We asked him on the 21st, I mean, it was...
Has he passed something out on the 21st? Joan replied on the 27th. Seems like six weeks. It's here or there, really. We're going to try to...
I'll ask him, I'll tell him the time.
It's just giving up time, frankly. Okay, can I, can I get the motions that, that...
So a motion to continue, so you don't really need a motion to send a legal, not something, we already know. I guess a motion to continue the public hearing and the application to November, whatever it is.
Seven.
Seven, we'll make that one.
Is that Election Day?
Not in this town, no. There's no election in this town.
There isn't, okay.
No. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Obsteing?
Obsteing.
All right, motion passes. We will try our very best to get you back here in November and get you... All right, does anyone need a break, or we get to the next one? Oh, thanks.
See, I'll see you, like, get my best to voice, okay, and I'll furiously read it, since that's your best.
We're ready for you. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, you guys. Are you an actor, or do you like, uh, have a chiropractic if you? You can just, uh, say who you are.
Okay, yeah, my name is Jeff Apsey, and this is a, a plan that I submitted to, um, rent a vacant Lewin building, uh, which is seven, ten minutes from here. So we did a, um, property survey, uh, that's a survey, it's an existing building. There is gonna be, um, one proposed addition for a egress scale on one side of the building. So if you look at the plan, that's the proposed addition, uh, the setbacks are all conforming. Uh, the other addition to the site would be parking. So right now, this is existing parking, and you can see we would be adding spaces over here, so that's additional parking. And then in the back, it's currently gravel, but we were gonna propose this pavement, so this would be, um, parking that would, um, be added so that the new use would have ample parking. The engineer couldn't be here tonight, he'll, he can come, uh, next meeting. He, uh, had to go down to Houston, uh, to deal with the flooding down there, so he's actually, uh, he was supposed to be here, but, uh, he got called out for that, um, special services, so. Um, but he will have additional, uh, he'll have all the engineering specifications for the drainage and, um, landscape plan, blah, 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 you know, all the other parts of the application that weren't complete. So, um, you know, for people in the, um, public portion, if they could make it to the next meeting and you had specific questions about engineering, that would be, uh, the time to come. I can try to answer, I just came to to basically tell the public what the site is gonna look like and what the changes are and what we're proposing. So that would be site changes, uh, we we've already done solar, that's existing, so the site changes would be parking. Uh, this parking exists, but we're gonna expand that. Uh, and then obviously the addition would be the, um, to the building for, uh, stairwells. Currently, that's the site, the other, um, this is, this is on the main street side of this, the building. So this would be the new, uh, stairwell proposed, and then we were going to, uh, put two new entrances on the main street side of the building. The grade would actually drop down on this corner four feet, uh, so that we could have two, um, glass entrances and, uh, more headroom on the first floor. Uh, so the site would actually come down a little bit, so you wouldn't have that, um, kind of the hill, we do take a little part of the hill, so that would be more of a flat entrance. It would just kind of soften up the entrance and make it a little more, uh, inviting, a little more accessible through the street. Uh, so that you don't have that big, uh, kind of sloping mass of, uh, land that, you know, this, uh, currently there's a landscape burn here that would actually come down, so it would kind of make the site a little bit less imposing. Um, so that, that's the main street side, which is pretty much what everybody sees. Um, I think what I'm, I think the rest of it, um, nobody really looks at the back of of the site, but that's basically what the back of the building is gonna look like, pretty much as it is now. Other than a new entrance, this would be the residential entrance, so basically all the residential tenants would be parking in the back of the site. And they would use this entrance, and pretty much the main street part of the site would be more commercial, uh, because it's a mixed-use, uh, proposal. So we try to keep the commercial on the main street side, where the commercial activity is, and then keep the residential in the back. But, uh, that's the plan. I think the rest is just, um, floor plans. Which you guys probably aren't concerned with, that's just floor plans for the can use, so basically, um, I'll leave it on the site planning, cause that's super, what people generally focus on, um. So basically, this is the, um, the development of the site, we have maintained the seven and a half foot setback on the parking. Um, we've, these, this engineering will come in, this is just a proposal of retention pond, swale, and then obviously, um, you know, managing the water, but that would all be to engineering specifications. Um, so, uh, all that, um, those calculations we presented. Uh, basically, as soon as he gets back from Houston, I'll get those to you guys, uh, probably within a week, I would say hopefully. He said he would have that done as soon as he gets back. So you'll get, um, all the calculations on the drainage, um, and I was gonna have him, obviously add the landscaping, but I was gonna try to get, uh, you know, some feedback from you, uh, the board or the public on landscaping, suggestions, um, and anything else obviously that's part of the application. So I'll just leave it on the site plan and and, uh, if anybody's got any questions.
Yeah, so we'll start with our, our board here.
Josh Revan, again.
Okay, but listen, uh, go back and I'll and I'll add, if you guys can talk about it, I've got, just got some questions for Jeff that you could write down on the plan, and you could have your engineer.
Yeah.
Yeah, minor stuff, but I'll, unless I'm doing it now.
Nope, oh.
So just to be clear, all access to the residential parking will be through Railroad Avenue.
Exactly.
Exclusively, and in front, it will be accessed off the existing curb cut that's here, although there'll be a grade change.
Yep.
Will be accessed off the main street, but that front will be designated purely for res, for the, for the commercial tenants, the, the retail tenants.
Yes. Commercial, yeah. Yeah, so basically.
So there'll be no, so that front lot would be empty during non-business hours, if if there indeed was no shut, no retail space open after hours, so if there's.
Yeah. Totally, yeah, I think the the first two floors are a hundred percent commercial. And then the third floor is like a mixed, um, use you'll see on the blueprints. So basically, there might be a few tenants back here that are on the third floor.
Yep.
Commercial, but it's it's kind of like half and half. But the the first two floors are totally dedicated for commercial or retail, and so that that would be this lot, so yeah, it wouldn't be used in evening, um.
And you can just touch base on what your lighting plans are, or whether, just some ideas you're doing for lighting from back?
Well, the lighting, yeah, the lighting, we were gonna do, um, we were gonna do building lighting and try to suffice, but obviously if if the projection doesn't make it, then we would put, um, something out here, but I would put it out here and point it back. Because, um, you know, the the residential area is here. So if if it was necessary to do the fill on the lighting, then obviously we would probably put it here, and then have it point back towards the building.
And on the rear lot?
On the rear lot, um, right now, we actually have lighting on the building and it fills this whole area. So the only question would be this part out here, which would probably be two, two streetlights, and they would, they would shoot this way. So basically, um, probably two, I think we're covered here, because the building's so high, the building's forty feet. So right now, we've got pretty much coverage, uh, with what we have. Uh, and then here, we would probably add two lights, uh, but to tell you the truth, this is, uh, Mid Construction owns this, and it's all wooded, and there's no, um, development here. So I don't think I would get a neighbor complete here, because, you know, the houses are here and this is all tree lined. You know, this is the water tower lot. So if the board wanted, I could do the lighting on the railroad side. Um, pretty much whatever the board really, um, would like to see, I'd be glad to do as far as, um, lighting on this portion. I think we can cover it with with building lighting here. Um, I can probably cover it with building lighting here, cause on this side, the building's actually sixty feet high. But if it was, uh, not in, you know, accordance with the liking of the board, and obviously I could do lighting here, shoot it back, um, in that direction, so that's.
Okay.
Because of the streetlights.
Give me a quick rundown as far as residential density in this building as hers, um, per floor, you said the first two floors being retail or or commercial, and then there's three additional floors which would be purely residential, correct?
Yeah, the top three floors, we're gonna do residential. Um, so that would be six, six apartments, per floors, that would be eighteen apartments. And then, uh, on the third floor, there is one handicap apartment, just to make the building ADA compliant. Um, so that's nineteen. So I think we put.
You're not putting an elevator, I'm correct, just a stair.
Uh, no, the stairwell is a code compliant stairwell. And then, uh, we've got an existing stairwell here, so that gives us our two egresses. Um, there's a freight elevator in the building, but obviously we can't use that. If somebody wanted to, they could, uh, technically, it's just for freight, so, um, so with the ADA compliant apartment, that's, I'd kick it to nineteen, but, uh, the floors are so big that actually six apartments, the layout actually work, the the average, um, size of the apartments, like nine hundred square feet, and they're all one bedrooms.
Do you have any commercial tenants in there currently?
Uh, no, there's no tenants, it's vacant.
Is there any activity going on inside?
Uh, we.
Any kind of, any kind of building or renovation going on inside?
Oh, yeah, we're just doing the.
Lots of activity.
Yeah, we're cleaning it out, basically, yeah. Cleaning it out, I I've got a permit to do the roof demo and some structural stuff, so I'm still working on that permit.
Okay, so it is just demolition?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, 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 we haven't done anything, uh,
Okay.
any fit up yet, we're still, uh, tearing at it.
If I can be very, so I have a question about the, the grade of the parking lot before the, um, you know, the commercial, and maybe I missed in your presentation, I thought that's what did. When the applicant came in informally last time, he talked about, I thought he talked about lowering the entire grade of the parking lot, and I'm not sure if this, you're still intending to do that or not?
Well, yeah, what it was is, um, if you look at the parking lot right now.
Yeah.
It's a pretty dramatic slope.
Right.
And all the water kind of goes into this guy's yard.
Yeah.
So we're gonna flatten it out.
And so.
Basically, this is the high point, so take, take the high point out, so go down four feet and then just make it flat.
Alright, when you did that, so where does then the water go? I mean, is it, in other words, isn't it gonna stay in the parking lot?
Yeah, no, it would stay in, obviously they do, uh, they retain it, so the the engineer will design the system, this is like, uh, can't remember if he's got a two percent on here or what, but it'll all go to two percent, and then he's got, there'll be a drain, it'll all hit the drain.
And when you bring the, so right now, when you you leave the parking lot, as I walk by and look at it, there's a bit of a lip when it enters the road. Will there be any, um, sight line problems? In other words, if you down four feet.
Well, no, no, right now it's up, actually.
Well, I know, I know, but you're saying you're gonna take it down.
Yeah.
So is it gonna increase the?
No, no, it would be level, if not above the road. If you look at it, right now, you you drive up at the entrance.
Right.
So basically, right now, when you come down, you're you're going down a hill, so now it would just be more level. So you wouldn't be going down that hill before you hit the road. This is actually raised above the road.
I know that the lip is, okay.
Yeah.
So again, just so I can understand this, so right, right now, you're saying if you pull in there, you go with the lip, you go up.
Yeah, yeah, right, exactly.
And so when you do the grade, when you go with the lip, what happens?
You'll just be going straight, it'll be more level.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Um.
The engineer can actually, uh, speak to that, when he, I mean, as far as how he's gonna tweak that, how he's gonna
Yeah.
uh, make this transition, cause this is a hill, as you know.
Yeah.
So he's gotta, um, mitigate that, uh, transition right here, so.
Now, I wanna drive by tonight after the meeting and look at the the lighting out back. Is it possible, again, that you could mimic the lighting out back in terms of lighting up front, if it's sufficient right now, like you said, forty, forty in the back, sixty in the front?
I don't think you'd want that, yeah, it's.
Because it'd be too dark, you're saying?
No, it'd be too, yeah, it would be, uh, you wouldn't want spotlights in front.
Okay, I just, I just didn't know what kind of lighting there was back to the beginning.
Yeah, they're, they're full-on spot, they were there when I bought the building, they're just full-on spots, cause like, you know, I don't have any neighbors here, and I've got solar, a solar right here, so it's all pretty much screened.
Oh, so you came in before.
But I would never do that to the other.
I'm sorry if I misunderstood, you came in before?
Yeah, yeah, it was.
Okay, I'm sorry if I, if I didn't recognize, I apologize.
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't do that to the neighbors, but, um, I mean, if, I can, but I, I'm sure.
Well, no, no, I just, I just thought I'd drive by tonight, and when you said before the lighting in back was adequate, I thought, well, please, maybe I'll take a drive by and see what it looks like.
Yeah, it's pretty dark, I mean, even the lights in the back are aren't working now, it's, the site's pretty dark, but, um, but this seems to work, and I don't really have any butter in this here, I think I would do something a little bit more, um, you know, low-key, just to kind of keep the lighting up.
Right. Now, my question is a, is a concern.
Yeah, so that actually, um, we'll, we're gonna have it on the next plan as far as how we, how we deal with that, or lighting.
Two, a quick question, I won't take that one to the board this time, is, is there anything of historical significance inside the building, like, um, is the freight elevator, is that like, you know, seventy-five years old, is there, is there anything that historical that could be preserved?
Yeah. I don't know the age of the building, but I I'm guessing it's late eighteen hundreds.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's not, I mean, we're saving everything, cause that's what I do.
Okay.
But, uh, I don't think anything has any historical significance.
Alright.
Um, but.
And is, I don't know if the board is very interested in that, I I always love walking through a site. Um, would you be open to maybe me in my own time, or 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 if the board would do a site walk, walking through the building to see?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, oh, sure, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Anyone else?
Why don't we get our public comment and then?
I have a question.
I just wanna get Jeff a listen, when he comes back, he's gotta.
Yeah, totally, I'm just gonna.
Miles, I'm.
I had you talk a listen.
Alright, let's, let's open it up to a public comment, and again, one at a time, state your name, speak clearly, use good grammar. I I I know the woman in the front has a.
I'm going, little grant, see, thank you, that's comments. Go ahead.
Sure, I've got, uh, a few that hopefully can answer without the engineer. Brian Teller into Ross Road.
Okay.
I, first one is actually a comment more than a question. Are you sure that the existing site plan is accurate? Uh, back in two thousand eleven, Carter Family Properties and Lewin, I altered the, um, I altered the two lots, uh, their lot and our lot fifty, where our parking lot is.
Yeah.
I I didn't, because I only got access to these plans today, I didn't have time to pull a copy, but if I remember right, we've actually got more land than you're showing there on your plans.
You know, that's a good question, I actually, you, can you show, cause I can't remember that, can you point to, I, I can't remember that, can you show where it is? This is gonna be my favorite.
If I recall, yes, actually, if I recall correctly, uh, this right of way was wiped out, and this border was moved here, so this concrete slab and additional parking was inside the Lewin property.
Yeah, I thought that was strange, that that was on your property.
Didn't Paul, Paul did that, didn't he?
No, 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 I think Adam did it, Atlantic Survey.
I.
No, Paul Conley did it, he represented.
I wanna say, I wanna say you.
He came to the planning boards, you should talk to his office, cause.
I only got the, the plans today, so I didn't have time to pull out right there.
Brian's right.
Yeah, because, um.
Yeah, well, you're right.
Civil consultants, right?
Yep.
Civil, civil works.
No, civil works, Paul Conley, it was just here.
Oh, civil works, okay, yeah, because, um, because I actually found some of the pins on your property, Brian?
Yeah.
And it was Atlantic Survey.
Well, Paul's not.
That would have been the, I, the older.
Okay, yeah, because I used him.
Right, that's what I was thinking, they probably just went back to the plans that they had.
Okay, that's a good que, point, because I used Atlantic Survey, cause I saw his pins, and I figured, well, he did the survey, but then the plan.
He did one at one time.
Yeah, so I'll call Adam, I guess.
We don't record site plans, so there is a good chance that that plan has never, has never been recorded.
Right.
Oh, and and sometimes we don't record subdivisions, so, um,
Yeah.
I recall, and Paul Conley, mo, he, even though he's a land surveyor, a lot of times he doesn't do his own work, he subs it out, and he may have subbed that out.
Well, I got time, actually, I got the plan from Civil Works originally. When I bought the property, I went to Civil Works, and they. And they gave me a plan, and they said, this is what we've done.
Well, I'm just saying, don't tell Adam Fox to run to the registry, cuz there is a fairly good chance that whatever lot lines we moved.
Yeah.
Aren't recorded.
Totally, and and you're right, and I'm glad you brought up, Brian, because I think what Adam did is he just went on newhanforddeeds dot com or whatever, got his information, so if it's not recorded.
Or the other thing is, so to start with Paul, if he can't help you out, then we could do his, but you know, we, I suppose we'd go to our files, but I don't think they're very good either, so.
Right.
Hopefully, Paul doesn't, I know it was Paul Conley who did it.
Okay, well, I'll talk to him, because I did get a plan from Civil Works that actually matched up with this plan. And then Adam came up with this, uh you know, licensed surveyor, so I'm thinking, alright, so I got two people.
It's probably none of his fault.
Yeah.
But, totally, so, yeah, that's a good point.
Alright, second, second issue, I, it says that you've got fifty-two parking spaces. I, which seems, if I remember correctly, fifty-two and four of them are.
Fifty-two, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that seems a little short for what you're proposing, with the nineteen apartments. And the seventeen thousand square feet of commercial space.
Okay, so I think the parking, uh it's two per apartment, right?
Right, two per apartment, so that's thirty-eight, with fourteen additional, which means one parking spot for every twelve hundred and fifty square feet of.
So that's thirty-eight. And then we got the handicap. Yeah, and that's actually, I'm excited you brought that up, because there's no regs for commercial, uh I I read through the zoning. And for, there's no requirement for parking for commercial in the regs. I couldn't, I couldn't find it anywhere, so, we were just trying to come up with something that was reasonable. But yet, have you seen, have you seen?
Pretty, I'm ninety percent certain that there is.
There is, Brian.
I wanna say.
Yeah, I didn't see it anywhere.
I wanna say, even if you're doing it as warehouses, like one per thousand square feet.
Yeah.
For a, for office, that's actually locked into our, I forget where Rollins is, I know uh Portsmouth is one per hundred and fifty square feet of office space.
Yeah, yeah, most towns are two fifty or in that range, but I didn't, I didn't see anything, so we didn't really know how to handle that, but that's a, that's an excellent question.
And particularly, if you're saying you're putting any kind of retail in, I mean, that front lot is not gonna handle much in the way of customers.
Right, well, I'm limited on the front, because obviously, like, I've added this.
Oh, absolutely, but, I mean, if you've got enough parking in the back to handle.
Right, obviously, you know. Yeah, and I can get it in the back, totally, you're right, cuz, because the way I've designed the building is this entrance is third floor, but you could actually walk down.
Right.
Get to the second floor and then you.
Yeah, that uh, the existing plan and the exceeding shortage of parking are the only two things that weren't related to drainage, so. I'll save the rest of my questions for when you're.
Yeah, talk to me here.
Get yourself a copy of the site plan review regs.
Yes.
Oh, it's in the site.
One per two hundred.
Oh, okay.
For retail.
Okay. Well.
And what is it for lit industrial?
Yeah, what's it for cor, uh.
Industrial.
I'm on the space for employee. Light industrial. Uh industrial is, well, one for employer, one for, one per thousand.
Okay, so what about um office?
Medical office is one per employee, three per doctor. Office, one per two fifty.
Okay, one per two fifty, I guess, I, so we'll just have to come up with an average, because we don't know the use, because we don't have a tenant, so. But I think we got it out back, like, I think we have the space.
So downstairs, I'm sorry, it's a public care apartment, Brian's asking about.
I.
I thought, I started handling the back.
Yep, Steve Ballot, four twelve Railroad Avenue. Uh, you're gonna be paving the back parking lot, is that going to join the pavement of Railroad Avenue?
Uh.
Cuz it was my understanding, Railroad Avenue extended all the way over to the tracks, part of that is dirt.
Yeah, no, I think the pavement right now stops here.
Yep.
So we were just gonna, I was gonna just keep the pavement on my property.
So there's gonna be a dirt patch between Railroad Avenue and your property?
Probably, yeah.
Okay, and I also have a question about Railroad Avenue is a pretty rough shape from when Blue and was in there. They're constantly filling potholes by the manhole. And with the amount of traffic that we're expecting, and we're wondering if any improvements were gonna be made to Railroad Avenue, it's kind of a narrow street. And currently, there aren't any small children around there now.
Right.
But there are tenants around, I'm a permanent resident there, but there are rent properties there that could easily have children, and I'm just concerned about that street. It's difficult for two cars to pass each other. So I'm just wondering if any improvements would be made to that street, cuz uh I can see that as being a hindrance. The only other concern I really had was the parking lot lighting, because if it's extended out to the edge of your property, it's gonna be shining right into my bedroom windows in my house. So I would be interested to see either how that's mitigated, or the way you design your lighting to make sure that it doesn't come in there. Cuz we do have a street light, but I do have trees blocking that, so if you get something of a high intensity to cover a large area, that might bleed over. And I haven't had an opportunity to actually see the lighting on the back of your building lit, to see how much that. I don't know, have you, is it working right now?
Uh, well, it was, and then I just disconnected it the other day, but I, I mean, I can.
Okay, I, I really haven't noticed it, but I don't, it's, but it's gonna be on all night, right?
I can temporarily do it. Yeah. Well, I was doing it for security, cuz I had a lot of vandalism.
Yeah.
So it doesn't have to stay, I think once tenants are there, then I won't have security problems, but right now, I get a lot of vandals.
Yeah.
I've got a lot of damage and break-ins and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I know, cuz I see the little gang running around there.
Yeah, oh yeah, there's a gang, yeah, I tracked them down, but, but they're uh, hopefully that's it, like, hopefully that's, I solved the problem, but.
So. Yeah. Yeah. You also had some damage to some of your solar panels, I understand?
Oh yeah, they did a lot of damage, they broke my solar array, they stole a lot of tools, broke windows.
Yeah. We did call the police one time, but by the time they arrived, they got there fairly quick, by the time they arrived, they were scattered.
Oh yeah, they moved quick.
We have a pretty problem with people climbing the water tanks.
Oh, really?
As soon as I see that, I call the cops right away, cuz someone's gonna die from that.
Yeah.
There's also an open well behind the water tanks.
It looks like fun.
That's uh, it's probably about, I don't know, six feet, it's covered with some rotten boards.
Right.
Someone's gonna fall through that, too.
Yeah, it's not a good site.
Yeah.
So where are you on Railroad Ave, on the side or this side?
Well, I'm the only house on Railroad Avenue, under Gray House, the only one there.
Oh, so on the side?
As you're driving up to the brown chain link fence.
Oh, okay.
Okay, if you're on your left, as you drive into your lot, yeah.
So you're on the left, okay, yeah. So basically, if I was, what I was proposing for lighting would be this side.
Mm-hmm.
And then all the lighting would face, you know, this direction.
Mm-hmm.
And obviously, it's down lighting.
I mean, you know, if it, if there gets to be an issue, I'll certainly let you know, I mean, if you can make adjustments to it, so.
Absolutely. Yeah.
But the pavement of the roads not meeting Railroad Avenue. And Railroad Avenue's condition in general are to, probably to my major concerns.
Yeah, I mean, we could pave it, but I don't like to pave town stuff, you know?
No, no, I just meant that Railroad Avenue is gonna end, but on, from what I understand from plans, it actually extends through the gravel portion to where it meets B and M's property.
You know. Does, it goes straight up, yeah, exactly.
And then you would be starting your, so every day, your tenants or whoever are gonna have to drive through that dirt patch to get there.
Right, yeah, good point.
So.
But you're right, this is all gravel, this is my property line, so I just showed to my property.
That's what I was kinda posing the question is, were any, was there gonna be any kind of mitigation of that? Uh in terms of the town's response, so. Uh aside from that, I'm sure I can stop by and see when you're working and ask you.
Yes, I would, I would.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
I had to ask you a question.
Yeah.
Where is this open well?
So you familiar with where the pump house is underneath there?
Yeah.
Well, if you walk around the backside, but towards the Blue and building, you'll see a, like a meter head sticking up, or a valve head.
Okay.
And then there's an area where there's, actually, it's an opening in there.
Levelled around?
It's, yeah, it's kind of under some undergrowth, so if you're not watching, if, like, if you're walking around at night, you're gonna probably hit it. And then you look down there, and I don't know how deep it actually goes, you can see a bottom, it's probably about four to six feet down below it.
Yeah, we actually cleaned that up, we, there was a bunch of trash, we actually cleaned that all out.
Yeah, you did. Couches and a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, couches.
Did you see the new additions that they took out there?
I took three loads of uh trash out of there.
Is that on your property?
No, I just did it, cuz I had to look at it, but there was a lot of garbage, which, and it was really weird, because it was like over by the well, and it was sketchy.
Okay. Okay.
So we got all the trash out of there, but I didn't wanna mess with the well.
No.
I know what you're talking about.
It's not your responsibility, but yeah, that's, that's only been that way for like twenty-five years, so.
Yeah.
Back to you for.
Yep.
Alright, any other public comments?
Cellulite pole, four twenty-six Washington Street. You had said when you came before, that you were going to lease um an area in the addition with the stairwell for a possible elevator, is that still on the plans? Is there gonna be like an elevator out?
Uh, no, we took that out, uh because we decided if we ever do a uh elevator, we can use the um existing shaft. Just take the freight elevator out, cuz it's pretty old, so it would actually make more sense financially, and just kind of for the design of the building, just to use. We would, cuz the freight elevators, you know, once you go residential, it doesn't get used as much. So we could obviously um transition that if we ever had to, but at this point, we don't need to do it, because we've uh put the access on the third level. You only have to go up three flights of stairs, you know, maximum, so it's doable. But if you start down here, you would, I mean, you, you know, you burn a lot of calories, but six flights of stairs is a lot, so.
They shouldn't move the furniture.
Yeah, and trying to move, right, so we've tried to mitigate that, so. But yeah, we took that out, cuz we were like, just trying to overdesign, and we decided it wasn't worth it, so.
Um, on your lights that you were just talking about in the rear parking lot, is there vegetation o- on the opposite end of the parking lot? Not where your solar array is, but in that area there?
Oh, here?
Yeah, along the road.
There's no, no, there's nothing here, this is, well, actually, there is some uh shrubbery, like, but it's owned by the railroad.
Okay.
So there's some stuff that's growing up, I don't know how they maintain their buffer. But um, this is my property line he- uh here, so we'll probably, when we redo the parking coks, we'll probably have to put spaces in here. So this will probably all be taken up, but um, there's some, if you, if you walk over there, check it out, but there's some stuff here that won't grow bigger. Right now, it's probably only about seven feet high.
I'm just also wondering about the street light that's on Church Street, across from the church, and across from the streets. That let out on Church Street, if that would affect your lighting or not?
Yeah, I think my, my lighting, I'm gonna try to focus this and try to fill this whole area with my lighting. So I don't think there's any street lights on Railroad Ave right now, right?
There is.
Oh, there is one?
Yep.
Okay, so I probably won't gain anything from that, but that is, is that at the end of the road, or like near your house?
It's um, it's right along my property.
Oh, okay.
It's probably even with the edge of your property.
Oh, okay.
So if you drive by it, just driving by, you'll see it, it's on the left-hand side somewhere.
Yeah, so somewhere in here, then, there's, there's a street light, so I would be adding lighting here, there wouldn't be any lighting added back here.
Okay, now, on Main Street, on the front parking lot, would you need to add lighting? Have you looked at what's available for lighting through the town, uh the uh streetlights?
I'd like to not add lighting, cuz I, I'm not a big lighting fan, but um, if I could utilize the streetlights, but a lot of um. Towns don't let you do that, they require you do your own lighting on site, so I, we'll have to look at that, when the engineer looks at the lighting. So yeah, this, this we haven't really addressed yet, I kind of intuitively kinda know what I have to do back here, and the engineer will show it on the plan, but here, he's gonna have to take a, like, do some calculations. I mean, I'd love to use this, the lights that are already there, I don't have to pay for them, it'll be great, but.
What about um landscaping, have you done a landscaping plan yet, or not yet?
No, he's gonna show that, I think the landscape areas are gonna be here, which is, currently, that's gonna stay, uh which is, right now, it's a mast, but that'll be landscaped by the road. And then uh this island will be landscaped, just to, to break up the parking lot. On Brian's um border here, that he's got trees that line this whole section, so that probably will get landscaped, and then there's trees that line around by the railroad. Actually, there's a good amount of vegetation along the railroad, um, and then here, mid-construction lot is all wooded. So I think the primary areas we'll be looking at is in front of the building and by the uh Main Street. And then um any islands that we create in the parking area, we, we would landscape the trees.
In your um commercial space, are you planning to have any restaurants or commercial kitchen?
I'm not, but obviously, if a tenant comes in, you know, that's uh, it's hard to build for commercial tenants. Uh it's, residential's real easy, you know, cuz I can make an apartment, but to do a commercial fit up, uh usually, you just end up chasing your tail. So you, you provide open space, and then the tenant usually comes in and they fit, fit up their own space, uh you know, as per their needs, so. That would be based on who comes to the table, and I wish I knew.
On the back, right now, you have an exterior staircase, on the same side where you're proposing the indoor enclosed staircase. Are you gonna take off the existing fire staircase that's there?
No, that's gonna stay, um but it won't be a fire escape. But it'll just be like a private patio area for, for those apartments. But I know, the code um allows us, as long as you provide two egresses, and the code allows us to use interior staircases, so that's what we'll probably be doing, those two.
And I think my other question, um, well, I have a comment, is that um. There is a cut through, um that people in my neighborhood, Church Street, Washington Street, use to cut across the railroad tracks to get onto Railroad Ave.
Yes, right here.
And then come into town, so you might see some people coming through there, and is there going to be any, it sort of leads me to a question, is there gonna be any stop sign or anything? Um at the corner of your property for the, all those people coming in and out of the um parking lot?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No, uh but I have noticed the traffic uh cutting across there, it's a pretty good amount of um, they go to the store, I guess, and then they go into town.
Yeah. Yeah, basically what happened, and then this is more for the um board than for you, but um with Railroad Ave being so narrow, is, and the increased traffic. Would it be up to this board or the select board to maybe consider no parking, like it was enforced in other areas of town?
I'm sorry, I was thinking about the illegal trespassing on railroad property. And you get hit by a train. What do you wanna know?
The select board.
Uh, Johnny answered my question.
The parking, parking on Railroad Avenue, that's a, that's a select.
Yeah, we would determine that, but I don't think you should be crossing the railroad.
Any, any other public comment? Questions? Alrighty.
Charlie Dial, forty-four Rollins, I just wanna know if you had any formal meetings with the water and sewer with this plan, to see if they can handle the water and sewer for nineteen apartments and commercial?
Uh, yeah, the, the building, actually, when I bought it, it was um, it was all commercial, there was fifty-five employees in the building. So I should probably get a credit for that, because they're all gone. So the building was occupied when I bought it, I actually leased it back to Blue and Company for about uh twelve months. But Blue and left, so now it's vacant. But you're correct, I'm adding uh residential, which it wasn't before, it was all commercial. Um and I did go to a meeting with the sewer department, the sewer water department. I spoke with the head engineer, and he said, there's no problem with capacity, I have to pay a, a fee, actually, uh to the town of Rollinsford. Pretty substantial fee, but I have to pay per apartment. Uh but capacity was not an issue acco- according to their engineer.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, so over back with us now?
Yes.
Your engineer's coming next month, we're gonna hold this over until next month?
Yes, that's. Yep, yeah, of all the other stuff.
And I have a question about snow removal, that sort of stuff, and then, but water irrigation, that's all gonna be.
Yeah, you'll get all the water coks, um lighting, landscaping.
So we're gonna suspend the public hearing until next month, um and continue.
Can I just give Jeff some comments, just so I, if you're gonna do this one?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yep, I'm gonna re- remodel the plan.
So um, one thing that would be really helpful, Jeff, is an overall site plan, because it's hard to tell, you know, where um you're, you're gaining access, there's really no driveway shown. So just an overall plan, maybe showing Railroad Avenue, so we all know.
I got you here.
Just blow it up a little bit, you know what I mean?
Okay.
Um, my second comment is truck access, how you can get, you know, delivery trucks in and out of here, I just don't want getting, I don't want this life, I'm getting complaints. Um, my second comment is truck access, how you can get, you know, delivery trucks in and out of here, I just don't want getting, I don't want to slip on getting complaints to get backing trucks in off of Main Street, so. I I don't know where you're gonna do it, or how you're gonna do it, or if you're gonna do it, but I guess, you know, somehow you gotta figure that out.
Well, Blueen was there for uh.
And I don't know how they work.
They went around the back to Railroad Avenue.
Yeah.
So.
If you live on that street, you gotta wait till the truck.
I can't believe they did that for years, because those truck drivers, the ones I've met, they bitch, I mean.
Well, you'll have a lot less. You'll have a lot less truck traffic, I just all, you know, I I'm just asking a question, you know, where do, you know, like in the front parking lot, it's really, really tight, so where does FedEx or UPS,
Right.
how do they get in and out of it, that's that's a question, and it may mean shortening up that center turnout, that center parking lot aisle in the front area, or so that you can make, you can make that. You see what I'm saying, Jeff?
Okay, what you, you talking about the front?
Yeah, and I can't, I can't, I don't understand your plan, you um, you've got a line going across your stair, you know? You got a line going across here, and I don't know what it is.
Is that like a planting block or something?
That's the existing parking lot.
This this line, okay, so as long as they can get, you know, around like that, you know, with a with a reasonable-sized box truck, just.
Right. Well, if you look at my elevations, I've got a overhead door here, which I put in this alleyway, so.
Okay, well, just have your, you just make sure that, you know, just the last one that it was causing problems.
But, you know. Right.
Totally.
Um, there's a, there's a, over on the le- left in the in the in the landscape area, there's a gravel driveway, it says C note seven, see that, right out of Main Street.
Here?
Right there, there's no note seven.
Oh, yeah.
So I just wanna know what it is, that's all, and maybe it's going away, so that's cool.
That's interesting.
That's that's amazing.
The um, we already talked about lighting, but have the engineer just give us a photometric plan showing what the light levels are, um, so that we know there's no light spilling off the property. It is, obviously, in the back lot is where we care the most, um, if you could add the setbacks around the lotlines, the zoning setbacks, just with a dash line.
Yeah, for the building?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just have them go around the whole lot.
Yep.
So we make sure there's no setback issues.
But not not a parking setback, cuz he's just put the parking.
Just a structural setback, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
My final comment is if you could dimension the parking spaces between them, like if you look in the, it's easier for me to step it up. It'd be really nice to have like, you know, twenty-four feet in between here, there, and there, and the same thing there and there, so you can back in and out, you know? Just to mention those aisles, it's not the parking spaces, but the aisles, so it's. My final comment is, oh, uh, two more comments, one is, can you have them add a chart with a parking count on it by use?
Oh, okay, so it's not good just to.
Well, he's got it, he's got it there, it's his proposed parking spaces, so what I want is a is a table, saying eighteen apartments times two units, thirty, I can't do math, thirty-six.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I got it, yeah.
Um, and then X number of office space at two at at two fifty a square feet is X number of spaces, that way I don't know if you need a waiver or if you're complying.
So everything's on the site plan regs as far as parking?
It's in the site plan, you're right, it's a simple table.
Okay. Okay, I don't know why I didn't get that.
And then my final comment is, over on the left, uh, you go down to Main Street, you go up about seventy-five feet, you see a stairway going down into.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Is there an easement for that, or what, I just, I'm always worried about, I mean, encouraging people to use somebody else's property.
I don't even wanna get into it.
Okay, okay.
But it is what it is, it's like the guy, I mean.
Okay.
I don't know.
I guess we don't care, it's just.
I'm good now, but obviously the, this guy has a problem, I mean, it's, this is my land.
Right, right.
So he has an easement, but that doesn't, an easement doesn't mean you can park.
Well, he has need of, oh, for for what?
That's his driveway.
Oh.
Yeah. I mean, it's been that way, it's ruined, would, Blueen's legal department send him a letter every four years or whatever, just saying, okay, you're parking there, but just so you know, it's our property, you know what I mean, just just to avoid that adverse possession, little glitch.
Okay.
But I really don't even know how to resolve that, I mean, I don't, I didn't want.
I, it's your problem, not ours.
Yeah.
I was just, that's all I had.
Yeah. So, but.
My final comment is, if you wanna, if you're trying to, if you're trying to kill them, if you're trying to move exponentially, if your engineer, if if you can get me these paper size paper copies, you know, a week or two before the meeting.
Oh, totally, yeah.
Then then I can, you know, it's hard for me when I get them at night, it'll be.
He's gonna get those, as soon as he's back from Houston, he's on it, so, but I'm glad Brian came, because I don't want him throwing the water at this
Okay. Yeah.
If it's the wrong survey, because I'll, they gotta pay for it twice, so I gotta get that resolved.
It was a, there was a whole bunch of lotline adjustments down.
Oh, it was wacky, yeah, so, do you, you don't have a survey, or?
Yeah.
Oh, I do, but I just got access to these plans today, so.
Oh, okay.
I didn't have time to pull anything.
Well, may, if you don't mind, maybe I'll give you a call and.
Yep.
See what you got, because that would be helpful, if I could give that to Adam. Cuz I've already talked to some works, but obviously I didn't hire him, so it's probably a different uh, arrangement, so. But yeah, that'd be great if you don't mind, I'll.
And I might, you know, we'll go back to my electronic files, see if I have something, I I would doubt it, it seems a while ago.
Yeah, I would, cuz I know this was purchased from the railroad, and it was a swath of you, yeah, all the way down to.
All right.
What what was your address again, I didn't catch it.
Mine?
Yeah.
Four one two Railroad Avenue.
Thank you.
Used to be number one Railroad Avenue before nine one one.
Photometrics, is that um, do you have specific specs on that?
No, all these, all, you've never seen the photometric plan, it's pretty simple.
No, I have, but I usually get them through the electronics.
Well, you don't need to, you don't need to pay for it, all all we need to do is is have, show a light fixture here, and show, yeah, and 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 tell us what the light levels are.
Right, in the film.
Really, what we want is zero in the lotline, so you know.
Right, so it's got the numbers.
All you gotta do is have the the light manufacturer.
I think he can handle that.
Well, the lighting manufacturer's gonna 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 provide it for you, so all you need to know.
Yeah, well, that's a different problem, but maybe I'll find out from the engineer, if he works with somebody, then it's easier, you know?
I'm sure they. I'm sure they've used, or he's probably used light fixtures before, that you can use this, you know, steel, steel photometric.
That's what they're probably gonna do, yeah, cuz it's all LED now, that's what we do, and then the landscaping requirements, is that in the site plan?
Yeah, it's, it's, it probably isn't gonna apply, because this is an existing building, but you know, I would say try to adhere strictly to that, you know?
Next. Right, yeah, I wanted to put it on the plan, you know?
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, you know, I I, you probably aren't gonna be able to admit that, be able to meet the strict regulations, because obviously, everything's already there.
Right.
New construction will be different.
Be different.
Yeah, so God, always gonna be gross with stuff on the plans.
You can avoid planting trees under power lines, but.
Yeah, I don't have that problem, I think in the front, it's gonna do like seagrass, and we're gonna get into trees, the trees will be all back, so.
Something that's not gonna grow out over the.
Solar roof.
Right.
Like we've had in the past, you didn't create it, but we have it up in town Main Street, so.
Oh, I've seen it, yeah, when I bought the building, it was actually.
Yeah, too much took over the sidewalk.
Weeds and bushes in the sidewalk, so everybody walked around, section, yeah.
Yeah. On the Main Street, I appreciate you picking that up.
I think I had Tony uh, clean that out for you.
Appreciate it, Jeff.
So it could stay on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Do you wish I could hear you, number seven? Number seven.
I think.
Make a motion.
All right, so we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, a and n, so this uh, this will be continued on our next meeting, number seven.
Oh, hey, I don't know who's gonna be adjourned, whether it's you or Sarah, but you probably should be careful about putting times on like we did.
Well, if it's the first applicant, don't, down as I'm going, because I have to go to one board, I don't, you know, but I'd make.
Right.
Oh, um, when.
Did they make a motion to adjourn?
I know, well, I, so we like, you know, I'm like, obviously, I'm. This was the only group, is that just her idea, but you wanna? But Frank hasn't said, so I'm going like a more flexible side, I'm just hoping that that's my issue, like truck traffic is, you know?
Motion to adjourn, so if you're all in favor.
You weigh that, yeah?
Uh, for the last couple of years, and.
Oh, that's true.
There's no room in that. The process.
Oh, I know.
So.
That was a natural budget, like it was, it was in each week, but it's still.
Oh, two weeks, I see. No, you stick us on cards.
Totally go through it, but.
So um, trying to see, and with that, of course, we need a a song there for for.
A fucking.
And things, so I was just trying to get a ball balancing, or some insight of.
Yeah, that's how the Euro guys. Because I was.
That was a seven two.
Oh, yeah, so you get that.
Yeah. Take the foot you can, people might.
This is automotive garage there.
Yeah.
We've been doing, I've been doing work in this, in this construction stuff.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, is it where the old school ones, those ones, I like the.
You speak of landscape.
Yeah, okay.
I was further up, I was.
Yeah, yeah.
Further to the beach that way.
You're you're close to.
Rollins Road.
I got you, okay.
Yeah.
Commercial.
Is it commercial or is it?
It's still the century old version of that.
I think it might have been the original Euro.
Take your presentation.
All right, cool, maybe time you wanna check out the building a little bit.
Yeah, when I get a chance.
All right.
But it's been used commercially for a long time.
Well, I've had my, I had my landscaping there for twelve years, and then Brian.
I I, I was like a chat with Justice.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, and he's doing a little construction there also.
Oh, awesome. So. Doesn't sound like it's a change.
I I don't know, generally, what was there, I mean, you you probably, what what is the state telling you?
Well, it's like, I need the approvals from the town, I can work out there, we can do automotive work, and then we need some.
I would start with, I would start with the building inspector, and see if if he's willing to give you, until issue a sign.
I would oppose it, I'm I'm not, I love.
It's a bit worse.
Yeah.
But I would just use that, maybe you can get a personal demo, and it's gonna get crazy.
Well, you all, I mean, anybody with any sense, think about that.
I would start with Tom Gray.
Right.
But anyway, I was wondering, maybe if you could see your landscapes.
Right, right.
I don't know, kind of, to the select board.
Change of plan, if you gotta, you know, influence.
We'd be every Sunday at six.
If you told me the landscape was.
Except for this coming one day, dollars.